Today is June 6, 2011 times seven, seventeen PM. And the Brooklyn Bridge Council of Councillors called to order at this time to question themselves from the pages in any of the devices these times please. Apologize for the lateness, we had a lot going on at the board of worse meeting, so we'll try to make up for it at the council meeting. First item on the agenda, Jim, is roll call.
Herb?
Here.
Jamie?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Helen?
Here.
James Scott. Our bail's not here.
Need improvements from that late second, 2011 meeting, are there any additions or corrections?
I'm going to agree with you, Grant.
Second.
Any more discussion? I'm going to go with Jim.
Jamie?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Thank you. New business, Gary Murray, Main Street, Broadway Streets. Lincoln Broadway Street updates.
Both under construction, will be for the next two months. Not good enough? On Lincoln Street, we switched traffic to the west side Saturday morning, strike that. Today, they went and milled the entire east half to reuse some of that recent asphalt they put down for the white. Tomorrow, they'll start digging up the remaining sub-bays and stone and then start constructing that side. They're going to go from First Street to Fifth Street and skip the Montgomery Road intersection and leave that till last. And they've done a lot of the pedestrian crossing signals and push buttons on the north half of the project. We're still on target to be running on binder curb to curb by the July fourth. There'll still be some concrete work behind the curb on the east side, so we'll still be running on the west side during July while they're using that lane for staging and pouring concrete sidewalks and concrete traffic. But there's a little bit sidewalk left on the west side that they ought to be able to pour from adjoining parking lots. We did have an issue with the light pole base being in conflict with the gas main, so we had to call and see totally located six, four, eight hours, and so that prevented them from finishing that last week. But they've got a prep and should have it doing this week. Broadway, they're making good progress. We have most of the pavers down on the block between the building faces and the planer boxes. They have poured all of the pedestrian refuge islands on both the east and west sides and poured the sidewalks on the east side. And they were starting this morning with the middle lane pedestrian islands. So progress has been going well, all the light pole bases are there and have electric to them on the east side, which is powered out of courthouse. We just contacted Duke today to have them set up the near base so we could do the light poles on the west side, so it would be city out of the way. All of those were leased from Duke before, so we did have a couple of those damaged during the storm, and when we took them down, we saved those and were able to reuse some of those, replace those that were damaged.
So the damage was related to the peripheral repair?
This is on Broadway.
Oh, Broadway.
This is on Broadway. Couple of them, there was one at Franklin, southeast corner of Franklin in Maine, and then there was one on the south side of the courthouse. That one's damaged also, the top was, it wasn't bent over like the other one, but then they also lost one of the flag poles, as good as we're supposed to try to save and reinstall, so we'll have to see how that goes.
Total completion by office, first on Main Street.
Construction or plantings?
No project.
We really want to wait till the trees in Shreve Green are limited to plant, which would be August 1st, but the latest schedule that I heard verbally from the contractor was done, done with construction items except for planting April fifteenth, or August 15th.
No, they're April.
No, August 15th.
That's not good.
August 15th.
Any questions for the council? Thank you, Gary. I'd like to call Kathy Reynolds up, resolution 2011 dash four. Open the public hearing, can you explain what's going on? Public hearing's open.
According to Indiana Code, anytime you do an annexation, there are certain processes, certain criteria you have to go through. And if you recall, last month's meeting, I brought a petition for you from St. Mary's Catholic Church on an acre that was approximately 2.81 acres of land that is contiguous to the city of Queens, that they're asking for annexation of a roadway to, assuming to be within the city limits. The public hearing gives, as stated, the public an opportunity to be heard if they have any questions or concerns regarding the annexation. And that way, it's openly open and gives us a chance to answer or try to fill out their concerns. So, Tim, is there anything else I'm missing?
No, it's a, it's an opportunity for the council to, 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 to present pros and cons to annexation, but also the public, the public has a big issue with the purpose of the annexation, to answer questions.
Any questions for the audience? Any might speak in regards to the annexation of the Marshall, there's a new St. Mary's District. Which is, under Robin Way.
Right. Railway's called Peter Robin's Way.
Last chance, no comments, we didn't mean close. I'd like to take a vote on the resolution 2011 dash four, on the annexation.
Which is basically the physical plan for the territory. I wish there is no real burden being added to the city. It's just a little strip of roadway that's being added, so it'll all, so the whole new roadway will be in the city.
Take the motion, Matt, for resolution number 2011 dash four.
Second.
Mr. Bishop, and this point is the second reading? No, this is the resolution.
This is the resolution for the physical plan.
Oh. For the public hearing. Any more discussion? Call Bill, please, Jim.
Herb?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is orders 2011 dash 11, and that is, we had the first reading last month at St. Mary's Parish in the city of Queensburg. We can do the second and the third reading by if you, so sorry. As we opened up on our last month and past years.
Yeah, I'll move we pass the resolution, uh, orders 2011 dash 11, on second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing number, call Bill, please, Jim.
Jamie?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Make a motion, Mr. Bishop. Second.
More discussion, call Bill, please, Jim.
Herb?
Yes.
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 Motion for third reading.
I move we pass the resolution on third reading.
Second.
Any more discussion? I'm going to call Bill, please, Jim.
Jamie?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Back to you. Okay, he's not here. In, during last month's meeting, we, the committee agreed and passed it on to the council, and they also agreed for a three-year payment. Mr. Velasco had concerns with that, and the committee revisited his concerns. We had given three, he had asked for five, and basically what we had done, we went back and reviewed the equipment.
He gave us additional information?
Yes, he gave us additional information that we could review. And when we had that information, we decided that still one phase of it should stay three years, one phase should be four years, and one phase should be five years. And it was on personal property. And what we based that on was basically the longevity of the line, and even if it would last eight or 10 years or whatever it was, we still give five, but that's been customary for the last many, many years, correct?
Yes.
Helen, I've been with the committee for seven years together.
Well, we went back and looked away, we mentioned last meeting that in the entire state, no one would ever get on a three-year. We went back, and we have already, prior to this, had seven on our books. So we have been doing great, depending on the information.
What we would like to do is to adjust his abatement, which is still to Valio's benefit.
Three, four, and five, right?
Yes, and I do not have the, so what I do is amend that order that's to Valio, the last S B ones.
The resolution?
No, we, we amend the last.
You have last ones there.
Last one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Was the abate committee, you announced on this?
Yes, yes, we were announcing this.
Do you have the abate number, which one's, which, which one's going to be three years, which one's going to be four, which one's going to be five?
Can we do it the way as I stated, there are three phases, correct Helen? Three different phases that are incorporated into the equipment. So we would like to give the phases a three, four, and a five year. There's three phases, and I believe the first phase was three years, second phase was four years, and the third phase was five years. With this, we're going to.
Yeah, but he came back last month, he came back running with the April.
We did have a lot before we heard.
Yeah, he did it in April, then he came back in May and asked for, I don't know about what I reviewed.
I don't, I don't get angles for the yours number, but we can help it make right now.
But it was a month ago.
So. Resolutions, yes, 2011 dash six, seven, and eight. So I'm going to take the motion, three years on six, on seven, five on eight. Three years and five years. Summon.
Take it.
Any further discussion, hearing number? Call Bill, please, Jim.
Herb?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Thank you, council. New business, renewals, well, you have all the information from the Harpington Drive, the City Estates, Green Signs, Mets, Tumi LLC, Family Dental, High Temp, Tree City Cleaners, Wolf Theater, and new is STI Personal Property Real Estate. Let's do with renewals first. The committee have discussed this, and we have agreed upon it. Most of these are not complete.
Just one motion then for all of these.
Yes.
All renewals?
Yes.
My next motion, renew the tax abatements for all Harpering, Harpering, Stradale LLC, Tree City Estates, Green Signs, Mets, Tumi LLC, Family Dental, High Temp, Tree City Cleaners, Wolf Theater. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number, call Bill, please, Jim.
Herb?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Thank you, council. New business, renewals, well, you have all the information from the Harpington Drive, the City Estates, Green Signs, Mets, Tumi LLC, Family Dental, High Temp, Tree City Cleaners, Wolf Theater, and new is STI Personal Property Real Estate. Let's do with renewals first. The committee have discussed this, and we have agreed upon it. Most of these are not complete.
Just one motion then for all of these.
Yes.
All renewals?
Yes.
My next motion, renew the tax abatements for all Harpering, Harpering, Stradale LLC, Tree City Estates, Green Signs, Mets, Tumi LLC, Family Dental, High Temp, Tree City Cleaners, Wolf Theater. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number, call Bill, please, Jim.
Herb?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new for STI Personal Property Real Estate Resolution 2011 dash nine. Gentlemen, would you like to come up, representing the best county? years on real estate. And that has been on the standard that we've done for years, I submit the maximum we've done, ten years on real estate. And in the last seven, eight years at least, it's been five years maximum on personal property. And I see what you, what you requested, ten years, correct?
Yes. I think I made primarily based on the long life of equipment, it's highly, highly capital intensive, and there are similar items of equipment operating in the plant now that were there at the beginning of the plant. So we anticipate the equipment in question under the abatement and service long beyond the abatement period, not as long as 15 to 25 years.
And the committee did appreciate your time that you came and gave us lots of valuable information on that. It was two gentlemen both were there at our commission, the abatement meeting.
It helps a lot. Yes, we asked people to come here for explanation.
We appreciate your thanks.
On the real property, this additional six employees on the personal property. That's what, that's what's showing for the real estate and personal property is adding six employees, maintaining what you have, adding six.
Correct.
And the investment on the property is, another $350,000 for the property, and another, what one is it on the real estate, on the property, personal property?
Five million, fifty thousand.
Okay. So it's worth five million dollars, maintain the current with additional six. And I think that's the reason we couldn't, we never went over five years. Really, it'd all go the other way. It should be five years on the, on the real stakeholders and with $350,000 investment there. There is much larger investment on the personal property, but we've never done that before. And I'm open for suggestions, council, but this is what the committee agreed to bring to you, you have two of the three committees here.
You're saying you agreed to five years on the personal property, ten years on the real estate?
Yes, and that's the norm, that is the normal rule.
And in talking with them, they showed on our sheet that the current number is 141, but then in talking, you mentioned you have 100, what you call temps, but your temps, and you might explain to the other members of council, are not as we commonly think of as temps.
Okay, yes, well, there is, we have 141 employees that are paid through STI, and then we have an additional 100 full-time employees that are paid through, with temporary staff. But those 100 associates work full-time, 40 hours a week.
And we realize you that are the full-time. We would leave it first, best, very good, but for. Herb, what do you think?
I, I'd give five to go clear division.
Jimmy, there.
I agree, I'm, I'm thinking five and 10. With the additional six, I, I think if it's a larger number, it might be debatable, but that's what the committee is suggesting.
So is there any questions you'd like to ask this gentleman? Anything else you'd like to address to the council?
No, no, please stop. Appreciate the additional consideration.
Would appreciate you coming in twice now, thank you. And I'm going to take a motion.
I may go ahead and add the resolution.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion? Hearing number, call Bill, please, Jim.
Jamie?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
$2,262.33, that's insurance. So, second, any more discussion? Please, Jim.
Herb?
Yeah.
Harold?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and then here's the break deal, that's on my side, TV. See, that's just from January through the last month, so.
Okay. Anything else, counsel?
What was this check from back in New York, Ellen?
That is the one where we took money out of Edit Money and, correct terminology, and we acquired property and it sold through the Honda Tiff and they reimbursed us. So we got the money back, back in the edit funds. And planned the acquisition for the empty real project.
That's the next county, Honda County, Tiff.
Anything else, counsel?
I'd just like to recognize the community of Greensburg for tremendous reaction to the recent catastrophe, I guess, that we had. The citizens of Greensburg helping each other, the utilities, the media, mayor, the administration. Why I live in this community, it's a great community, and I think we are rebounding very well. Hats off to everyone.
And you know what, I say I support the community. We've had people just woke up and start helping, volunteering. OSL, last week had 50, 60 employees out, helping the street cleanup. Last week Honda had about 200 people.
Yes.
This, this last Friday, we had 100 people out, one day again, they helped clean up the community and helped tremendously try to get rid of this brush off people's lungs, so they can cut the grass and not kill the grass. And we really appreciate everyone's efforts.
Mr. Robbins? Good job. I worked 22 hours overtime.
Mayor, you might bring, or is it we do have companies coming in?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Right now, there's only been seven companies that have purchased transit license, that is, that's if you will. There's three of them that are in the process. One of them, I believe, is ready as soon as they come in and pay for the license. Be very careful, I keep preaching beware, beware. Some people have been on their contracts, they get you to sign it, and you decide to back out of it, they will take, or try to take one third, whatever the estimated repair was for. If I want to see one of them, I have a contract on my desk that says that. So a lot of other companies, 20%, if you change your mind, of course, you're 23, 3% in a lot of cases. A lot of people are doing this, a lot are, and I keep telling everyone, talk to your insurance agent and wear a jester before you do anything. So we're trying to keep things as safe and orderly and businesslike as possible. Anything from the audience? Work my heads. Hearing number one, can you motion to adjourn?
I move.